Oh, again, Peter.
Hi.
Oh, and there's Bob. I don't know how he puts up his hand like immediately as he's joining. And and just a reminder, Peter, that Mickey is will not be.
Oh, yes.
Evening, she had prior.
Good evening to answer your question, Stephanie. I always feel bad that I'm running late, so I click as soon as I can.
You're so fast because I I feel guilty like, oh, my God, he's raised his hand already, and I just saw him.
Yeah. Um, so, um, Joanne's our new member, right?
Yes.
Hello, nice to meet you.
Hi there. Nice to meet you all.
Yeah, thank you. Welcome. So everyone ready to start up? Sounds like it. Okay, I'm welcome to the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board. This meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom attendance by board. Commission members will be remote and remote attendance shall count towards quorum. The meeting will be broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. To use Zoom, you will need to use the link on the agenda or download the Zoom application. And create an account or use one of the column numbers listed on the agenda. You will need the webinar ID to join by phone only. While conducting meetings remotely, we will endeavor to keep the meeting operations as close to our standard procedure as possible. However, use of this platform will necessitate some additional meeting protocols. While the board members are commission commissioners and applicants will be on video and audio. Public participants will join the webinar as attendee, meaning they are muted and with no video feed from them. During the public testimony portion of the meeting, members of the public can be recognized by using the raise hand function. Found under participants from Zoom or make a request with the Q and A function. If you're joining only by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. If an applicant wishes to display materials, please make the request of the chair and the email materials to the board staff for sharing on screen. When starting testimony, please state your name and address for the record. Additional details can be found on page two of the agenda on the town website. Um, we start with a roll call. Um, Kaden.
Here.
Uh, Joanne.
Here.
And Stetson.
Here.
Oh, Joanna, how would you like me to pronounce your last name?
Zigment.
Okay, thank you. I'm Deshane, whatever you want to call me, but um. So Zigment, thank you. Um, okay. Um, first item tonight is a continued public hearing for five twenty-three Foundry Street Special Permit Mixed Use. Uh, but this is being continued to October second.
Motion to continue the public hearing to October second, Stetson.
Is it second?
Get him second. Yep, Zigman got that, I think. Okay, all in favor, Stetson.
Aye.
Zigment.
Aye.
Kaden.
Aye.
You shine eye. Um, now we have a public hearing ten Morse Road, um, special permanent duplex, South Shore Habitat for Humanity.
And Peter, I have promoted Norine.
Mm hmm.
Um, she's representing Habitat in Norine. If there's anyone up, I see someone raising it their hand.
Dylan Brown and Harry Queen.
Okay.
Oh, hi, um, how are you associated with the project?
Oh, and, um. Mister Chair, shall I read us in?
Oh, yes, please.
Sure. In accordance with the provisions of chapter forty-eight, sections nine and eleven. Uh, the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. At six thirty P M. To be held remotely on the application received from South Shore Habitat for Humanity. For a special permit duplex dwelling under Eastern Town Code, Chapter two thirty-five. Uh, uh, dash fifty-six special permits to allow the creation of duplex dwelling located at ten Morris Road, Eastern Mass. This meeting will be conducted remotely via Zoom. The virtual meeting link will be contained within the posted agenda at least forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Copy of the application and plan may be viewed on the town website.
Thank you. Um, okay, go ahead. If any applicants would like to introduce themselves or present.
Very good. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Dylan Brown, and my office represents South Shore Habitat for Humanity, which is a five O one C three. Nonprofit organization that has contracted to purchase the vacant parcel of land located at ten Morris Road. In Eastern Massachusetts from the town of Easton's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Specifically in response to a request for proposals from the town dated June twentieth of last year. Habitat Humanity was awarded the right to purchase the vacant parcel of land. Uh, in exchange for constructing an affordable duplex thereon. But more importantly. Uh, pursuant to its purchase agreement with the town of Easton. The future sale of these two homes will be subject to deed restrictions whereby the sales will be restricted to. Qualified first time home buyers who have incomes that are at or below eighty percent of the area median income. This restriction ensures that the two homes in the duplex will be sold to affordable families, and this will be accomplished simply by placing a deed. Uh, or a restriction in the deed to the property. Now, ten Morris Road is located in a residential zoning district and pursuant to section two thirty-five dash thirteen of the Eastern zoning by law. A a single two family home or a duplex can be constructed. In a residential zoning district via a special permit issued from the Planning and Zoning Board. And according to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-eight and Section two thirty-five dash fifty-six of the Eastern zoning by law. The Planning and Zoning Board may grant a special permit if it determines that the. The adverse effects of the project don't outweigh its beneficial impacts and in doing so. Um, it it is required to adhere to a a certain number of factors which are listed in the bylaw. The first is the. Social, economic, and community needs which are shared by the project. First and foremost, as it's. As noted in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund's public comment, which I don't think were read into the record today, but I I did receive them, and they were part of the agenda. Um, they they made clear that affordable housing is a priority for the town of Easton. Here we have Habitat for Humanity, who is proposing to construct two affordable homes that are going to be subject to deed restrictions. Ensuring that they these homes are sold to affordable families at area median incomes of eighty percent or or less. And what's even better is that. Even after these homes are sold to to affordable families, the town is able to use these homes in its affordable housing, um, stock fund. That will count towards the town's surplus of affordable housing, which is obviously a benefit for this community. The second factor that. The zoning by law requires that the the board, you know, consider here is traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. Again, Habitat for Humanity is only proposing to construct these two affordable homes. The construction of two affordable homes will likely result in. Give or take maybe four or five additional vehicles. Um, to this neighborhood and the addition of such a small number of vehicles. It it's not going to worsen any traffic congestion and from a traffic standpoint, uh. We would argue that the that this this project wouldn't serve as a as a detriment to the community. And well, I don't think it's up on the screen, but in in our application, we also submitted a site plan. And on that site plan, you can see that this duplex is going to be served by a shared driveway, a shared driveway leading in to to the two. Dwellings that are part of the duplex, but with even with the shared driveway, each duplex. Or each home in the in this project has ample parking. Um, which is adjacent to the duplex, so there's not going to be any street parking, uh, which would be a detriment to the community either. The third factor under the bylaw is the advocacy of utilities and other public services. That in short, there there are sufficient utilities in in this neighborhood to serve ten Morris Road. The property is served by Town Water, and as you can see in the site plan and with our application, each of these two homes is going to be served. By a separate Title V compliant septic tank. Each each one of the homes is going to have its own septic tank, which is laid out on. On on the site plan. And in addition to that, there's electrical poles and electrical wires that are both on Morris Road. And the the abutting Foundry Street. And in fact, we just found out after talking with Norine that. The property, eh, if not across the street, they're very, very close by fourteen Morris Road, just installed their own electrical light bulb. So Habitat for Humanity. Can't connect their electrical utilities to that light pole. Um, they're ready, willing, and able to construct their own in order to provide. Power to the to the uh, to the property. Fourth factor is neighborhood character and social structures. There are three single family homes that was able to count in the immediate. Eh, you know, vicinity, and that's a single family homes located at two twenty-seven Foundry Street. One Morse Road and three Morse Road. Now, um. As you can see on the plans, the duplex will be comprised of two Cape style homes, and these Cape style homes will be constructed of hardy plank. And as noted in the actually, the historical commission's public comment. The the Cape style type home, as well as, you know, the those homes being constructed with a hardy plank. Are consistent and with with this residential neighborhood, and therefore we we would argue that. Um, the addition of these two homes wouldn't have a detrimental impact or certainly wouldn't be inconsistent with the other residential homes in this neighborhood. The. Fifth factor is the impacts on the natural environment. Now. As noted on the site plan, there's an irrigation pond that's located. On the adjacent property to the rear, but even with the inclusion of this irrigation pond. No construction will be constructed in either of the wetland buffer zones, and that's because. Habitat for Humanity specifically designed this project so that the the two homes, the shared driveway, the parking areas, and any portion of this project. Is going to be located at the front of that property. So by locating. All those structures and the driveway and everything else towards the front of that property, they're not within the buffer zone, so no construction uh, will be. Located in proximity to any close wetlands. And. As you can also see on the site plan, in which we discussed in our letter submitted with this application. While the property is located in a rare species habitat zone. Pursuant to a letter from the Massachusetts Division of. Fisheries and Wildlife dated October night eighteenth of twenty nineteen, the. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has already determined that a a project in this location wo- wouldn't result in a take of any state listed rare species. And after speaking with the engineers who are out on this project, it's their assumption that that that's still the case, and that it that's their recommendation. If if further testing were needed to be done or further review of the project by the state. Habitat for Humanity is ready, willing, and able to to make those determinations. But like we said, um, this has been looked at. Um, as early as twenty nineteen, and there hasn't been a determination that this project would ex violate any portion, um, or that the. Ma- Massachusetts Commission of Fisheries and Wildlife would issue a determination seeing saying that they don't recommend the project or don't proceed with the project. And. In addition to that, eh, as noted in the Board of Health's public comic, perk in soil testing was conducted. Um, but it hasn't been submitted yet. Those tests were conducted on September twelfth, and while we don't have the results of those test rooms to date. Um, after speaking with the engineers and with my client Habitat for Humanity, we have no indication that there's going to be any. Testing results that would deem this pro. Project unsatisfactory. We just simply don't have the testing results to date, um, and will be happy to provide the the board with with copies of that once, once, once they're, um, produced. And the sixth factor and final is the potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment, taking into account any proposed mitigation. Again, this. Project is only proposing to construct two residential dwellings, and therefore any impact on the town or its services is going to be minimal. Um, i- i- if at all, but in addition to that, a positive impact on the town is that this is currently vacant land, but by constructing two affordable. Housing units, that's going to create two additional taxable units, which will create eh additional revenue for the town. So we think that that's a a bonus for. Uh, for the community as well. And therefore, because the project provides affordable housing, we think that its beneficial impacts significantly out. Outweigh, um, any any adverse parts of this project, if there are any. And for those reasons, we would ask that Habitat Humanity's special permit be granted, and. We're here to answer any questions. I I'm here to certainly any answer any questions about the application letter. Along with me tonight is Norine Brown from South Shore Habitat. For Humanity as well as her construction manager for this project as well.
Okay, thank you for the introduction. Um, Stephanie, do you have any? You had a few comments, I believe?
Um, I, one of the comments was related to the Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program. That came from the environmental planner. I did see those documents in the folder after uh, my report was issued. Um, I I think that all the other points were made. I didn't, the only one comment. I had on the plan was that they did not show the two foot contours, which are generally required. Um. And the elevation and floor plans, the architectural design of the structure is consistent with, um. One that was constructed on. Rockland Street in the past.
So with the, um, with the. Uh, proximity to the wetlands and the, um, the costable endangered species of of of. Uh, possible species, um, like require the Conservation Commission to become involved here too?
The it they do need to file, and I believe they've already submitted their application to the Conservation Commission for review.
That's correct, Norine.
Well, we have, we have reached out to, um, I spoke with Stephanie Holt, I'm sorry, Emily Holt. At, um, N H E S P. Who, um, said, once there is an approved plan, we will have to refile with N H E. Sorry, N H E S P. Um, but they said we should wait until we have the approved plan, and then can we file? However, she doesn't believe that a change from one single family to a small duplex style. Would, um, change enough, as she said, would result in additional habitat law. And would likely have no concern that will impact the existing determination.
Okay.
Without making a determination on our conversation, which we understand.
Peter. Uh, yeah, go ahead. Would you like to suggest that they share the plan so that the public?
Um, yeah, I was just gonna ask the board members, they had any, um, any comments for, um, the presentation that, um, Mister Brown, um. Begin with since there was some information that. Uh, any board members, do you have any questions now? Would you like to see the plans and architecture?
I I I have a question. I have seen. The plan, uh, that was sent to us, uh, and it's maybe for Stephanie as well. Uh, eh, the word used in is duplex and. I'm. I I'm reading on the on the bylaws. And, uh, it this look more like more like a multifamily, difficult, di- di- difficult to see. Without getting into detail, if this. Two eh, dwellings have. Eh, common. Or. Common firewall, and they are separated. They are corner to corner, and we have this discussion before. Uh, so it looks to me like the right definition is multifamily. And not duplex. As we know it, and I don't know what are the ramifications, what 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 this brings, but we have been on this. And we have changed. Some. Uh, plans of the past based on that definition for some reason. Uh, can you clarify, Stephanie?
Yeah, well, yeah, and also at the same time, since you've started with that, let's look at the, um, let's look at the architectural plan, so we can kind of see something while we talk about that.
So I have the plan. I don't know how to share it, to be honest. I keep pulling it up and sharing.
I I can share.
Okay, yes.
They they look joined on the corner.
Okay, but I think I have zoom up. Can you see the plan or do you see?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, let me get the floor plan. I think that's a little later in the.
You were there.
Was it earlier almost? Is that?
Yes, yeah, was was is the first one is.
Okay.
It's 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 right there, right there. You you pass it. Go go back down. It's right there.
Oh, I I thought I I thought. I was asked to show the floor plan.
Oh, well, we could, yeah, if there is a floor plan, okay, yeah. The floor plan might actually be a better representation of how they that could join.
I can take a look because I have a big, um, ice cream. Um.
I know they provided it.
We have the front and we have the front side and rear elevations. Right here.
But you have the floor plan.
Interply.
Well. Yeah, it's just hard to tell from either set of plans, like how the how the two units are joined.
Stephanie. From the material you sent to me, there is no floor plan. And that's the reason. I I mentioned what I mentioned. On the top view that shows the properties on the map. They are joined on the corner. They are corner to corner.
Mm hmm.
And and that is not the definition of duplex. I don't know what this. If this make any difference to anything.
Well, it does, because, you know. Well. We don't necessarily set a precedent. It becomes a bit of a template, um, where we approved one, whether or not it was a. For a special purpose or or, you know, kind of. Fulfilling some of the town's goals or not, it still is a duplex in here, so. Um, we do have to consider that, I think. Um. I think.
I I in my opinion, the multifamily.
So, you know, it's maybe if we ask the applicants, do you have anything that shows how those the two parts of the duplex are joined?
I, Peter, I'm also looking for that. And and looking online if I pull it up.
I mean, it's not like a hang up for the project, I don't think. It's just a matter of having. The required information for us to make our decision, yeah.
Sure, and what what I could add is. Eh, the zoning by law defines a special permit would be needed for a one-two family dwelling or one duplex dwelling. Uh, while maybe not the definition of duplex per se. I I think it would still fall in the definition of a two family. Certainly.
Uh, that's what I think. I I wanted to make sure.
Both of which would require.
Okay, but this is a, this is, this is a hearing for a duplex, right? So. That's right. And yeah, then we should have see what we need to know, understand like how it is a duplex.
I mean, I think I think the issue is just it's it's definitional, and we have gone through this in the past where we've. Where we've kind of set it up in a not dissimilar way. But it's it's, but it has been separated typically by by a firewall, and I think that's the hang up here. Is it this sort of the way that the site plan? Shows it. Is it is it almost looks like two different structures that just happen to be kind of overlapping? As opposed to one structure, and that's that's sort of where the hang up is. I I sort of echo Peter's point, which is. You know, not that this is, this comment is not necessarily a hang up on the project. Overall, it just may. You know, we 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 just may need some additional information, um, you know, as to the separation and, you know, maybe. One part of it can be pushed back a little bit and. You know. I think that's, I think that's the point with that Amos and and Peter have been raising.
Yeah, uh, i- if you look at the top view, but this is not Peter, they are joined in the corner.
Right, so the only top view that we have shows them adjoined at a corner, not by a wall or even a breezeway, so that's that's what we got there. Um. But.
However, question, I'm looking through the the bylaw, and there doesn't seem a place for it to sit then, because multifamily is defined as three or more.
Correct.
Well, no, I think they were saying two family.
Mm hmm. Right, but this is.
This is right, but I'm saying in the bylaw, it's either a duplex or a multifamily. There's no actual like two family category.
Definition.
Yeah, I mean, I I I think what would be. I think the issue is that eh, this would be two separate structures on one. Property. If. We're sort of understanding the way that it's connected, which would be impermissible.
Right.
Again, not to say that the project overall. Can't be done. Um, you know, it just, eh, so maybe maybe we can turn this back to the applicant and, um. Uh, the applicant's able counsel. You you know, was there was there a reason, if you know? Why it was sort of joined in the way that, uh, that it's joined, which does appear to be sort of. Uh, you know, not not consistent with our typical definition of a duplex.
I think if you could pull up the site plan again, just so I can see it from the, um, the aerial view. I believe we don't have it just on the corner. It was pushed back. It's it's a little, it's more overlapped. If you could enlarge that one there. If you could pull that plan up a little. Bigger. So they did go back and change that overlap so that it doesn't.
Sorry, I want to make it as feasible as possible for everyone. I'm I'm going to blow it up a little more.
So, Norine, what I think you're saying is is that it's not just the corners touch or they meet in the middle. There's actual an overlapping of the two buildings or the two structures.
Yeah, yeah. So if you zoom way in, yes, there is, um.
And.
Something there.
Hey, but hot.
Norine, what is the scale on that?
Is there a firewall? Is it separated by a firewall?
There would be.
It would be a very small firewall, that's.
Yeah.
Maybe a foot. I mean, I can't really tell.
Cause I, cause I think, uh, Norine, correct me if I'm wrong, that the 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 design was revised in a way. So. Like I said earlier, it's 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 not two corners touching at a lot here. There 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 isn't overlapping. And I I can speak to the not using multifamily or anything. The the there's no perfect definition for it, right, under the zoning by law. The basis for why we submitted the application as a duplex is because that duplex also falls into a one-two family structure. So. Rather than two buildings touching at a corner, there is there is an overlap of a wall here. Is it the entire side of a firewall it's touching? No, but it's certainly more than, you know, a a connection point.
Well, but but let, eh, you know, just to kind of get it, getting it's a bigger picture here. I mean, is there, because it it's it's nominal. The the overlap is nominal. It's not a traditional duplex, the way that you would typically see it. But is there is there an issue? With the site or were there any other restrictions that you guys are aware of that sort of required you to kind of keep it? The way like like if we were to go come back and say, I'm just throwing it as a hypothetical. If we were to say, guys, we we need, we need it to be more substantial there, so it kind of looks like one structure. Um, you you know. Do you do you guys foresee any any issues on the engineering side of being able to 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 do that?
And keeping the same layout, the way it's laid out?
Well, in other words, if you take the, if you are looking at the structure on the right. And sort of if you were to push it back. So that the overlap is more substantial, so that it looks more like one. You know, do one building as opposed to the way it looks now, which I think a lot of us are having issues. It looks like two buildings. Um, if, you know, if you were to push it back a little bit more, is that something that that is? You know, is that doable? Is that is that something that you can you could pull off?
And really, you know, I mean, you know, I mean, our bylaw is is flexible, right? So that's. We allow people to bring different designs and different ideas to us. Um, but. We still have our own. We still have a say here. You don't just say, oh, well, the bylaw says that, so. So you have to accept this as as whatever you want to call it. I mean, we. We have a say here, and we're saying that this should look more like a duplex and not just two houses connected at a corner.
Right. So, no, we don't see any engineering issues. Um. We just basically were trying to, you know, kind of emulate the Rockland Street property, so. If there needs to be subdivisions, we can accommodate.
Um, yeah, I think some of us would appreciate that. Um, could we, if we look at the site plan, just, well, we're on the site plan, but Stephanie, maybe I just zoom out a little bit, so we just kind of look at the.
Yep, hold on.
A- and just so when we go back to our engineers, are are we, are we wanting, you know, the two sides completely flush? So it's a that hundred percent of the side is flush with the other side of the building, or is there? Some some wiggle room for that effect? I understand, uh, that it's nominal here, but you know, how much should we tell our engineers to maneuver this?
I mean, from from, this is just me speaking, you know, we we have, we have. Uh, approved, not dissimilar kind of offset designs in the past. But I think in those instances, it did look more like. Kind of one structure, so I don't think there's like a magic. We're not gonna. I don't, at least me personally.
Sure.
I'm not going to hold you to a specific percentage of coverage. I think it's. A little bit more aesthetic in that instance, and.
Okay.
Oh, as long as it kind of looks like. One structure, I, you know, I mean, I I think that that would be sufficient to alleviate at least my concerns.
Okay. That sounds reasonable to me.
Eh, and you know, keeping it in that area, you're still away from the buffer zone, uh, just making it floor. Yeah. Flush and more, you know, traditional in the sense of a duplex, um. Norine, if there's no true engineering issues with that, I think we were just, like we said, we're basing it off the of the Rockland Street project, um. So the it it, I I think a revised plan could be done.
No, yeah, I think you'll be okay with that. And just, um, you know, once, while we're on the subject, I mean, I think Stephanie just mentioned the, um. The contours, um, that we require for these type of, um.
Okay.
Um, otherwise, does anyone have any comments on the, um? Um, otherwise, does anyone have any comments on the um, kind of the site layout?
So Peter, hold on a minute because I need to get back to the um, I'm gonna.
Stephanie, Sherry Green is here as well. I just see she's not made.
I, I see that. I'm trying to get back so that I can.
Thank you. She's our.
Oh, excellent.
We're texting back and forth. I'm like, let's make you live.
Oh, was um, was Sherry going to, um, she here to speak or just, just?
She can probably comment on the engineering issues and a little more about, you know. Sherri, can you unmute yourself?
Okay, well, while she's on mute, I'll just mention that um, Mickey Wolf um, arrived a little bit late here, but she's now a participant in our meeting.
Okay, can you hear me?
Um, yes, yep. Please just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Sherry Green. Um, my address is twenty Oasis Way in Plymouth, Massachusetts. I'm Construction Project Manager for South Shore Habitat. Um, so there shouldn't be any engineering issues. These are basically two free standalone buildings that are. It's the outer sheathing basically that's gonna touch. Um, I don't see the concrete foundation walls touching. We'll probably bring in. Some kind of material or facade to cover up that area, but it's not like they're conjoined buildings. Um, they're touching. Just as a, you know, kind of a show off kind of piece to make it happen. They're not near together.
Yeah, I mean, really, I mean, you know, so our bylaw says. A bylaw says a two-family building designed with separated dwelling units side by side, separated by a firewall. So um.
So wherever they touch.
And contemplate that, I would hope would um, would kind of satisfy that base.
Yes, that would be firewall, wherever they do touch, that will be firewall braided inside and out. Yes.
Okay, so not just like two standalone units, just like that happened to, like kind of a little kind of like fake connection, just so they. Right. We get a lot of these and um, you know, and we're flexible, but when I um, we don't just. Just do this for the fun of it, right? And we have a, we have a kind of, the kind of the way we look at duplexes.
So I, I, I can see this design being narrower on that lot with fits better. From every point of view. Uh, I just brought this up because I don't know if multifamily is. Is different judgment from the point of view of town and and bylaws, I mean.
Um, yeah, I would just suggest, I would just suggest making this a duplex and uh, be done in two weeks, but if you want. Do something else, get a variance for two.
Understood. If I could just comment to that. I don't think it would be multifamily, right? Multifamily would be. I mean, as opposed, I think what the board's concerns are, this is more of two structures on one lot rather than your traditional duplex. So if the plans are revised in a way that's more traditional with the duplex, more matchup of a firewall, um, then it would. Likely follow closer to the definition of what your traditional duplex would be.
Um, that, that would be appreciated. I don't really think. Does anyone else have any other questions or is there any public um, comment on this?
Uh, I, I have just another question. In respect of clearing this uh, lot for construction, preservation of uh, trees. On the area, uh, and what will be uh, at least ideas of what the landscape will look like.
Do we have a proposed landscaping plan yet, Noreen?
I think there's a little bit on the site plan. If you want to pull it up again, let me just take a look.
Hmm, I don't, I don't see it.
If it's not.
We, we are striving to, to keep as much as the local uh, and trees in place.
Oh, you're right.
And sometimes we require on the, on the plan to show us trees that are. Larger than certain size. You remember, Peter, what do we actually ask?
Yeah, yeah, sometimes, yeah, yeah. On duplexes even, yeah, sometimes. Right, so there's probably not, uh, we'll probably leave everything kind of alone near the hundred-foot buffer. Right, that leaves a decent amount of space for a yard or something else. Um, but I think almost is more kind of considering like, you know, like the streetscape, right? Not like the. And and possibly like any, like a little, kind of a little bit of a buffer between any neighbors that I might just prefer a little privacy.
I rec- I recall there's not a lot, or currently, there's not a lot of trees between ten and fourteen already. I think a lot of our trees are over toward, if you're looking at the plan up toward the right, you know, behind the area. We do as minimal tree cutting as possible based on cost. So you know, we really only take down the trees that have to come down to get the homes in. But um, we don't plan on clearing or getting rid of any trees that do not need to be removed.
But you were saying that, that part of the lot is already um, is was, doesn't have many trees?
I mean, so it's between ten and fourteen. I don't recall, Sherry, you speak of, I don't recall a lot of trees between ten and fourteen. But there is, you know, quite a few trees in the area of the um, where the, the homes are. But no, we wouldn't go any far back, but then we have to, to take the trees down.
And is a lot of that, Noreen, because fourteen's already been developed or is in the midst of being developed?
So I just, um, I'm showing the lot here. And in fact, where it's cleared is, looks like um, towards. The rear of the property and within the, within the buffer zone, actually, it looks.
No, also in the front.
Really, quite a bit of it is, and, and I stated that in my report, that it's substantially undeveloped woodland.
Okay, that's what I saw on, on Google. I just couldn't exactly show it if I was looking at the right spot, but yeah, okay.
There, there is some, there is some clearing on the front. Do you see that? Near the street, yeah.
Yeah, there's some, there. Be some deciduous trees there. That have um, dropped their leaves.
Yeah, there's like a big maple kind of overhanging. I don't even know which property it's on, but it's, it's near the, it's near the clarity area on that lot line on what.
Yeah, looks like it would be right there.
Can, can you zoom out and show us the abutters? And, and see where, where is the next house?
Yeah, right there. You can, uh, the, oh, you want to see where the next homes are?
Pretty much right across the street.
So sorry, hold on. I am going in the wrong direction here. Let me get my hand back. So the nearest house is right across the street and then over here.
Yeah, plenty of, plenty of uh, trees in between. Yeah.
Well, but not for the one across the street. That's kind of what, you know, I mean, people do have houses across the street then, right? So it's not like.
Yeah, no, it's, it's. Is, is it, uh, but there is no abutters. There is, there is no neighbors.
So they're, they're coming up with um, another plan that we'll look at in a couple of weeks. If anyone has time and one is um. I think we have enough information to understand where this lot is. So if you want to just drive by and if you have any um, you know, ideas, maybe we can take a picture or something. I'm not, is that a dumb idea or does that seem like reasonable? Since otherwise, the only other option would be to ask them to locate all the trees, which we, we're not gonna do.
No, no, I, I don't think they need to do it, but it's clear that most of the trees are in the back and they will clear the front of ours.
Oops.
There is a mom going in at fourteen Morris Road next to ours.
Yep, yeah, that's the cleared area on the left sort of, yeah. Okay, um, all right. Well, if I have time, I'll just do a quick drive by, but well, you know, maybe you just start a decision, well, you know, ask to maintain like a. A buffer along the two side property lines, you know, with any substantial trees or something.
A- as a condition, Mr. Chair?
Um, possibly.
Okay.
That's my idea, I mean.
Yes, I, I think if, if you are agreeable with that, I don't think it's much to ask. We really try to, to conserve trees whatever we can.
Yeah, we do.
And then on the other side is that the graveyard's on the other side of the property, it looks like, right? So, okay.
Right.
That's great. Um, okay. Is there any um, public comment?
I don't see any, Peter.
Right, um.
Hold on, of course.
Hello, Mr. Chair. Yes, hello, Mr. Corr.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair, how are you? Yeah, just from some clarity on that from the landscaping. I live at one Morse Road. So I'm on Morse Road, but I live at one Morse, so. Um, ten Morse, um, it's all, it's all tree front, the whole lot's trees. Uh, there might be a bear spot where they went in. I think they did the um, the test, the perk test or whatever. Uh, fourteen is where the new house goes in. That's completely clear. So I don't know, there's no real trees between where this, these duplex are, you know, two families gonna be. So there'll be a clear line from that new house being built to these houses going in. Um, but the ten is completely tree covered, the whole lot. I, I don't know if that was, is, there's no real opening on ten now. Those could have to be a lot of trees taken down to do ten. If that makes any sense to the conversation.
Yeah, that's why we can just kind of think of the property line, but I mean, it's not gonna be a big super hang up for me. I'm just, I'm, I almost just mentioned it, but thank, thank you for.
Yeah, I, yeah, it's gonna have to be a lot of trees taken down to do it though.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and then also, I don't, I don't know exactly the border between the cemetery and ten. Where does that go? Is this, is there like a forty-foot buffer between where that property will end and where the cemetery will begin?
I don't think we really saw anything on the plan that, that indicated that.
I don't know if there's any restriction from that standpoint, but there, there's that, I don't know how far it's gonna be. I don't think it's gonna be.
The, they're forty, forty-five feet about off that property line. So no matter what the restriction where I do, I don't think would, I don't think there is a restriction besides the regular sideline.
I'd be, I'd be interested, you know, because I think that's historical, isn't it? The cemetery? So it might be.
Mr. Chair, if I could respond to the question. It is a historical cemetery. It's not under any kind of restriction from. Other properties requiring that they maintain a buffer. Um, although I, I always recommend, and the board has heard this. Um, they hear it from the abutters that if you are a property owner and, and the folks buying the home want that buffer. The best buffer you have is the one that's on your own property. Um, and as Peter just mentioned, there's no setback requirement from the cemetery. Other than the lot line setback, side yard setback requirement, which they're complying with.
Okay. Yep, interesting question, though.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Um, not at this time. Good. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, and in, and in that case, I'm, I'm kind of assuming you'd like to come back at, to our next meeting?
Absolutely. If we could continue this matter and prior to that, we could submit revised plans, um, hopefully. More lining up the, the, the firewalls, the two structures and getting it more compliance with the definition. Um, we could certainly go back to our engineer and do that. I did have a question for landscaping. Are we proposing any landscaping on the revised plan? Or is that could be in a condition? The development to be considered? I, I just want to go back to my engineers with um, with marching orders. That's, that's all.
Does anyone feel like that's really necessary? Or do you feel like then? You will have like typical home landscaping, right?
You will, yes. We can put a few shrubs and bushes on, yeah.
Okay, well, then if you want to plop, yeah, drop those on there, then that'll be done, right? So. And then it was just the Hardy Board that I think is agreed upon, so um.
Yep.
Yep. Anything else? Anyone that would like to see on the plan?
Do we do anything about lighting or we don't need to do anything for?
No, it's a house. I don't, we don't usually, but because.
Residential, we usually wouldn't do it.
Probably not, not that necessary. Um, good. Okay, so just um, make a motion to the next meeting is, I think it's in a couple of weeks.
When on the second? October, Stephanie?
Yep, it is.
Yes, 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 October second.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to October second, Stetson.
Okay, then, second.
Okay, now, all in favor, Wolf? Mickey, are you in favor?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Oh, that's okay, um.
Yes.
Get him.
Hi.
Next one.
Hi.
Jay and I. Wow, you've got full board here. That's a, that's a lot of uh, roll calls there. First time in a long time. Okay, um, thanks, everyone. Um, we should be good next, in a couple of weeks. We'll um, wrap that up, we'll close it. Uh, review, close and uh, be done, I think.
Understood. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Was a good discussion there.
Peter, I need the folks for two forty-nine Purchase Street to raise their hands. I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, folks from two forty-nine Purchase Street A and R Home Grid Engineering, please raise your hands.
I thought I, so, someone earlier, but.
Oh. Well, we can start up and then maybe they'll, we'll show up unless you feel like we really need the president's here before we.
This is a pretty straightforward A and R plan.
Um, yeah, would you mind sharing your screen then? Or I can help.
Do that.
I think they were just reconfiguring the lot line because.
So they're currently both lots are pre-existing, non-conforming. What you can see here, this dashed line represents the existing property line between lot A and lot B. Um, and the house sits. Right now, pretty much on top of the property line.
Did we already do this one?
I.
Yeah.
I was, I was just wondering the same thing.
Yeah.
I, I think it might have come to us from the uh.
The Board of Appeals, I think, yes, the Board of Appeals.
Okay.
Yes. I was having that deja vu myself last week.
Yeah, it came, it came to us to recommend or not. I don't know what. I think we recommend.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
So really, this is just for the board to endorse the plan.
Um, yep, and it meets all the um, criteria.
Well, it does. You can see down at the bottom of the plan, it indicates that the variance was granted um, and recorded, so.
So lot B is a buildable lot because it already uh, granted and recorded variance for the.
Right.
For.
Right.
I see. Um, yeah, does anyone have any questions about the um, the process here and how this works?
And I always forget, do we do a motion to endorse the plan?
Yes.
We do, right. Motion to endorse, endorse the A and R plan, Stetson.
Okay, then, second.
All in favor? Um, I'll go first, uh, the Shane, I, uh, Kato.
Hi.
Zigman.
Hi.
Stetson.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Okay, um, that passes.
And Peter, I just promoted Dan Boulez. As a panelist. I believe there are. A few people here representing the project.
Okay, so this is a courtesy site plan review for one oh two Eastman Street, EverSource, um. And um, it's a courtesy site plan review because um, this type of utility um, is exempt from certain filing requirements, I guess. Is that correct, Stephanie?
Correct, yep.
And that's the case in this situation. But they've been nice enough to um, to gather a site plan for our Curtis review, so. Um, once they're ready, we'll check it out. Oh. Well, please. The record.
Jim Blackburn, um. Uh, one oh two Eastman Street, I represent, I'm with the owner. Ju- just before I get started, I don't think we need any other panelists besides myself and Dan. Is Tim gonna be joining us, Dan?
Yes, I was gonna ask Stephanie if she could uh, bring in Tim Brace and Ty and Bond as well.
That, that probably, uh, if we need to ask for anyone else to join, we can do that at the time, but I think we have everyone to cover this. Um, I'll, I'll kick us off. So uh, Jim Blackburn, I am the, uh, I am EverSource's manager. Of our liquefied natural gas engineering group. Um, unfortunately tonight, we don't have our senior project manager. Uh, Cheryl Coesgarden, who's really been champion in this project. Um, however, we do have the technical team here, um, from our consultants, uh, Ty and Bond. Um, so I'm gonna end up turning most of this presentation over to Tim, I believe, who's gonna uh, present the slide deck that we have. Um, I'll just take a moment to give you a little high-level overview of the facility itself. So um, the Eastern facility was constructed in approximately nineteen seventy-two. Um, it's a liquefied natural gas storage site for EverSource. Um, back in twenty twenty, we purchased. This facility along with several other facilities from Columbia Gas. Um, and brought that under our existing umbrella of Hopkinton LNG Corp, which now owns um, and operates. Ten uh, supplemental gas facilities throughout New England, primarily Massachusetts. We have one facility also in. which now owns um and operates ten uh supplemental gas facilities throughout New England, primarily Massachusetts. We have one facility also in Waterbury, Connecticut. Um, as kind of was highlighted originally uh in the conversation here, um, the facility does benefit from a zoning exemption that was issued by the Department of Public Utilities uh primarily due to kind of the unique aspects of this energy facility. Um, typically not falling within most towns zoning kind of purview and understanding. Um, so we do rely on that uh for most of the zoning at the facility. However, I think you'll see as we go through this uh generally speaking, I think we do meet all of the zoning requirements of the town related to the proposed project. Um. High level, the facility uh has an LNG storage tank where we store approximately uh twelve million gallons of liquefied natural gas. It's essentially a large thermos. And within that, um, we place LNG, which is just natural gas that's been cooled and turned into a liquid or condensed into a liquid at approximately negative two hundred and sixty-three degrees Fahrenheit. Um, that allows us to store a large volume um in a very condensed state in which we can then warm it up during the winter uh when natural gas is at its most demand to serve the areas regional customers that we have. Uh, we then warm that LNG back up. It turns into a gas and we put it out into the distribution system out in the uh streets. Um, the project that we're presenting here, um EverSource, when we acquired the Columbia Gas facilities, had um agreed with the Department of Public Utilities that we'd invest heavily into the facilities to refurbish them um and bring them back up to modern uh standards, um ensuring that the facilities were safe, reliable, um and uh maintainable. And so I think with that, Tim, do you want me to turn this over to you and go through these slides? Do you want me to finish this slide here or it's up to you?
Sure. I mean, it doesn't matter to me, Jim. Wherever you want me to jump in, just let me know.
I'll finish the refurbishment plans just because I've been living it for the last eight years. So um we uh EverSource had three uh other facilities prior to the Columbia Gas acquisition. Uh, we invested over three hundred million dollars into those, uh really two of those facilities um and bringing those up to um kind of modern standards. Um, we have the same intentions with the facilities that we've now inherited from Columbia Gas. Um, this is one of the locations that we've picked as a priority. And so with that, uh, the project that we're proposing here um is to replace the existing control room with a modern building that's separate from the process area. And we'll see that on the plot plans that we'll present. Um, really, that building will be a replication of a project that we did similarly in the cushion at Massachusetts where we modernized the control building there. Um, it provides additional space that you'll see um where we can have some administrative folks, uh we'll have our maintenance crews report to this location. Um, it'll provide uh a lot uh kind of more user uh friendly uh ability to to maintain and and operate the facility. It'll have a modern control room within that building. It's primarily an administrative type commercial building. Um, and you'll see that, I think, in the design plans. Um, we set it back off the street to the extent possible. Um, there's a lot of wetlands on site, so we've kind of selected this specific location uh to avoid that. Uh, and so we're we're as far off the street as as practical. Um, and we've maintained as much of the tree line buffer along the street to be able to somewhat screen that building to the extent practical. Um, we're also including as part of this an electrical building and a maintenance building. The electrical building will serve the process area of the plant, so it's kind of located a little closer to that uh equipment. And then the maintenance building will help uh us to continue to kind of modernize the plant, provide the necessary resources that we think a facility like that warrants. Um, and then we've, you know, as part of the administrative control building, uh we've added a new entrance to kind of segregate our trucking that we use to fill the LNG storage tank. Um, and uh the normal entrance way for the administration buildings so that we don't have, you know, uh mail delivery and such going into the process area unnecessarily. Um, we included a parking lot and a septic system to accommodate the new building. Um, and then there's also a communications tower that's got some cellular stuff on it, um that's leased to some third parties. Uh, we don't see a need for those third parties to be going through a site like this uh for their normal activities out of that tower. So we we're looking to construct a new access roadway. It gives us a little better control over security at the facility, kind of segregating that group and necessarily bringing them into the to the site. Um, and so our main function at that location is we um again, store LNG uh during the colder months when natural gas is most needed in the uh region. We then uh vaporize it and put it back on to the distribution system. And so I think with that, Tim, why don't uh you pick up and you can go through the rest of the slides and we can address any kind of technical design questions?
Sounds good. Um, let me go back here. So this is essentially the site. This is the drone view looking north from the south end of the site. Like Jim mentioned, the entire property is essentially wrapped in wetland. Um, there's very few areas of the site that are actually developable because of the amount of wetland resource areas that exist on site. Uh, the majority of the work that we're proposing is gonna be in this area. Hopefully, you folks can see that up here, the north end of the site, just east of this uh trucking turnaround area. There's a little bit of work proposed here where the electrical building would be um mainly because the transformers for the site live over here, so it it makes the most sense to come off a pole, go into the electrical building and then tie directly into the existing transformers. Um, but the priority is to replace the existing control room with a new control building, new electrical building, backup generator and a maintenance building. Um, the buildings will allow EverSource to modernize the electrical system, but the big thing is to in- increase redundancy and reliability of this site. Um, and then there's also a slightly larger staff presence at the site. Right now, there's about six to eight personnel daily. Um, conservatively estimating that at most it would double that, um but it it might not even be that much. And so this is a site plan of the facility I was just talking about. So the main gate is right here. This is the existing entrance. We're proposing the control room right here, a maintenance building here. This fire water building is actually a future building. Uh, we're not proposing it at this time, although the stormwater management system is sized for it so that in the future we can just construct that facility and and tie it directly into the stormwater system. Uh, two new access roads um included in the project. The first one is basically an access road off Eastman Street. This is for the majority of the visitors that visit the site and there aren't many, um mainly UPS and delivery drivers. Uh, the second entrance is is gonna be protected with a bar gate. And it's essentially just an access road to get the folks to the existing communications tower. That's a least agreement with EverSource, I believe, so it's helpful to have a dedicated road when they need to do um maintenance on the tower and stuff like that. Um, both access road will have lighting, exterior lighting, uh building light fixtures. All of that is gonna have a what's called a U zero rating. It's a zero uplight um bug back uplight glare rating. So it's basically dark sky compliant. It's so that you're not producing any what they call light pollution and and affecting um not only wildlife, but um um other things that could be affected by the the lighting, including humans. Um, so these are the two roads. There's the main one that I talked about going into the parking lot and then this other one that goes to the existing communications tower. So the control building itself is gonna be about sixty by one twenty-five. It's a masonry block design and it's gonna contain basically the control the the plant control room, offices, kitchenette, restrooms and a conference room. So it it shares that same character as all the other buildings along Eastman Street that the masonry block or split face block, as they call it. And this structure will conform to ADA guidelines, even though they don't anticipate uh members of the public going there or or people that aren't authorized to go there. The building itself will meet all the ADA guidelines. The other building's a maintenance building. So that's fifty by fifty. That's a pre-engineered metal building and that's essentially just an area for plant employees to store parts and to work on equipment. This is probably the only structure that you won't be able to see from Eastman Street because it's gonna be hidden by the uh the trees where, let me see if I can find it here. So on this screen, this shot, you can see it. The control building's here, the maintenance building's here. The electrical building is here and we're doing our best to maintain as much vegetation in this spot over here as possible. So we're basically just clearing enough trees to get this access road in to the parking lot, but we're not you know, clear cutting the frontage. So like I said earlier, this maintenance building probably isn't going to be visible at all from Eastman Street. Uh, third building is the electrical building. Approximately twenty-five by sixty-five, again, a masonry or split face block design uh consistent with the rest of the structures on Eastman Street. Uh, the limit of work is located outside of that fifty foot wetland buffer because there are wetlands on that side of the site. And it's also gonna be the location of the transformer and a natural gas generator. Stormwater design, so this is currently being reviewed. Oh, I shouldn't say that. It was already reviewed once by the Conservation Commission. Um, their peer reviewer has offered comments and we're actually in the process of doing some more stormwater test pits out there. Um, to uh find some other areas of the site where we can provide better stormwater management. So the design itself is still somewhat in flux. Um, but like I said, we're working with the uh the conservation agent's peer reviewer and we're hoping in the next few weeks to have that uh buttoned up so that we can move forward with that process. Uh, but it's a pretty prototypical, low-impact design. Uh, we're gonna use a wildlife or a wildflower conservation mix in any areas that um that were disturbed as part of the construction that aren't gonna be a maintained lawn area to just kind of give those areas back to the uh to the wildlife. Um, there's also stormwater design in this portion here, which is the access road to the cell phone tower. Um, that road itself has an asphalt curb cut apron. I believe that was a a rec- recommendation to DPW. A locking bar gate to keep unauthorized people in there, out of there, um utility poles and then stormwater management features. Utilities, so there's gonna be a new overhead electrical service from National Grid. That's gonna come more off the west side here and like I I talked about earlier, it goes directly to the electrical building, which can then feed the transformers that are on that west side of the site. Uh, relocating some of the utility poles adjacent to the cell tower. Again, new lighting for the access road. Um, there's gonna be a water tie-in at the street and a gas tie-in at the street. Um, we understand that there is currently a moratorium on Eastman Street, so there is gonna be some sort of a mitigation payment involved with those tie-ins. And then as far as landscaping, so the trees that we took down to put this new access road in are basically gonna get replaced with what's out there now. I think it's mostly white pine and and white oak. Uh, but there is some other plantings proposed to give a little bit of biodiversity of the site. Uh, the bio retention basin being where a lot of those uh um new plantings are gonna reside, winter berry, little blue stems, some northern bayberry, service berry. And then the rest of it is uh basically uh perennials and grasses within the the parking areas and then um a few other uh ornamental trees, like I said, for a little bit of biodiversity in the site. Um, the other piece that I don't think it's gonna actually be visible from the street, but we can bring it up anyway. It's a um gas overpressure protection station and it's basically two sixteen inch parallel parallel runs of um piping. And it's used for an emergency shutdown situation. There's some sort of problem at the plant. This OPP station, my understanding of it is, has like pneumatic actuators in it and whenever something is sensed, it can be um um initially uh shut off immediately so that um there's no problems in the system down the line. So it's just another safety measure that EverSource is proposing as part of this project, but I don't actually think anyone's gonna see it from the street or it's gonna have any visual impact or anything like that. Um, local concerns, so these are just some bullet points, talking about some things that we we heard earlier in the process. Um, the buffer, a a buffer of trees is gonna be maintained. Like I mentioned, we're not clear cutting along the frontage. Um, all the buildings are gonna have a similar commercial look and feel as all the other existing buildings. Um, disruption to traffic in the surrounding area will be minimal and temporary. Um, and the activities are spread out to limit the number of workers and equipment on site. Um, and obviously, all construction will take place in accordance with EverSource's best practices, state requirements and any applicable town bylaws. Uh, so the permit status right now, like I said, there's an NOI currently open with the Eastern Conservation Commission. We're working through stormwater, so hoping in the next few weeks to wrap that up. Um, there's gonna be a disposal system construction permit with the Eastern Board of Health. So we did test pits May eighth, yeah, so way back in May, we did our our stormwater test pits. We're gonna have to submit a variance because the time of year when we did those was outside of the town's window and we didn't see any redox features. Um, but there's also gonna be a disposal permit that's gonna be submitted as part of that, but we're gonna wait until we finalize the stormwater before that goes in. There's also gonna be a street opening permit from the Eastern DPW. Um, submitted prior to construction. That's a little later on. Trench permit with the uh Eastern DPW. Again, that'll be submitted prior to construction. And then we have obviously a building permit with the Eastern Building Department. That's another one that's gonna be submitted prior to construction. Um, and also the construction general permit because we're gonna have disturbance over an acre, so that's gonna require a EPA filing for a CGP. And I think that is it for the presentation. Happy to answer any questions you folks might have, though.
Yeah, thanks. That's uh really interesting and thank you for um improving our infrastructure around here. So um I guess I just had a quick question on the um the electrical building. Is that like right next to the property line or is that just the way I'm looking at the different pages of the plans on my?
No, it is. Yeah, could I? That that's actually true, but um so there is a property line there, but EverSource um all the parcels are contiguous ownership. So EverSource that, but EverSource owns them all. And actually, the majority of the wetland are on that second abutting parcel, not this main parcel.
Yes. Okay, so what then what's like the, it's like a ten feet minimum and then a twelve feet? What is what is? I'm just wondering like where that comes from. Just like, is that like regulation, like state regulations or for like the building code for this type of?
I'm sorry, ten, what where is that ten foot?
Oh, on on one of the pages on like the.
Oh, you're talking about that maintenance. Yeah, so that's actually, Jim can correct me if I'm wrong. That's actually a DPU regulation and it's it's to have provide a maintenance buffer around the outside of the facility. I think that's dimension, that's the dimension you're actually seeing. Yeah.
Oh, cool. And then the um what are those things in the back called the um not condensers, they're the um, oh, yeah, the vaporizers. Uh, those are just kind of like, they kind of go on another piece of EverSource's property. Is that what's happening there?
So so the vaporizers will um so if you look at the plot plan that's on the screen, right? You've got the electrical building on the bottom left there or the mid-left and then down towards the bottom uh on the left-hand side is all that process area. The vaporizers are kind of at the bottom far left corner. It's just off the screen here. Um. Those won't be touched as part of this project, but I I will say that that is part of the investment at the facility. So if you go back to the aerial photo, Tim. Um, you can see the vaporizer is kind of there in the center. That's that kind of green uh right there. So those are original to the facility. Part of why we're installing this new electrical building is we have intentions of removing those and installing modern boilers and shell and tube heat exchangers, no different than quite honestly, probably on the school um as far as boilers go. And then the the shell and tube heat exchanges would be our new uh means of vaporizing the LNG. That's how any new facility would be constructed. The existing vaporizers there are certainly well past their useful life. It's a technology we wouldn't ever use these days. Um, and so part of installing the new electrical building is to facilitate some of these improvement projects over the course of the future. We are really not expanding the facility in any way. We're just modernizing it.
Yeah, wow. Uh, any board members have any questions here? Oh, any um uh there anyone for the public, any any people that might live in this area that have questions? No? Stephanie? Stephanie, did you have any comment?
I don't see any hands raised from the public.
Um, I I have a question for a project like this from the point of view of safety. Is this required for the state or someone to inspect the facilities after the building because the nature of it?
Yeah, so we we are primarily inspected by the Department of Public Utilities, the Pipeline Safety Division. Um, it's, we regularly see them on site. Um, I think it's required every other year. I believe this year they'll be onsite at all of our facilities. So we do receive a regular inspection by them uh to ensure that you know, both from an operational maintenance perspective, but also from the construction standpoint to ensure that any facilities or improvements that are made at the site meet um the required standards. So yes, we will uh be inspected throughout this project um over the course of our normal inspection cycle.
Uh, uh, another question. Part of your upgrades are you upgrading also eh security eh eh in case of emergency related to this facility and modernizing that too?
Yeah, so I I mean, I wouldn't want to talk publicly about too much, but certainly you can tell, you know, just by driving by the facility, you know, there's fencing and and you know, you can probably see that there's cameras and and as part of this work and some of the other work taking place on site, we've been modernizing and upgrading those facilities. Fencing and and you know, you can probably see that there's cameras and and as part of this work and some of the other work taking place on site, we've been modernizing and upgrading those facilities. To meet some of the the newer standards that we have in place. So the the answer is yes, without providing too much detail, but yes.
Okay. Yeah, they might just vaporize you if you try to go there, so that, yeah. Um Stephanie, do you have any comments for the site plan or anything?
Um I don't really. I do want to echo um. What Jim just said, so. That. To um. Confirm that in fact they had received the designation. I mean, it's not an automatic that your. Project is not subject to local review. They have to. It has to be reviewed by the Division of Public Utilities, and they provided the document. Um indicating that as well as. In that report, it indicates certain um. Quali- uh certifications that they need, and they referenced all of those, so.
Great. Um yeah, okay. I don't really see a reason that we'd have to kind of wait for Conservation Commission to finish up. I think um. These guys have done a great job explaining this, and um, I don't know, if anyone has any other questions, then otherwise we could maybe. Move this along.
You, you, are you asking for a motion to endorse?
Um yeah, that sounds good, since we don't really approve it, we can endorse it, right?
Yeah, okay, so motion to endorse one or two Eastman Street uh facility uh I presented. Get him.
Second wolf.
Okay, um all in favor, um. Zigman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Kaden?
Aye.
Uh Deshaun, aye. So. Well, that passes. We didn't really have to pass it, but I did anyway, so um. Thank you. And it just so happens that um you guys replaced my regulator today as my regulator as the regular maintenance thing. He called me up at work. And he was like, oh yeah, I'm in your driveway. I was like, all right, I'll be there in five minutes. So luckily I wasn't in a meeting or somewhere else, so thank you.
That was only a coincidence. There was no.
They told me to do it, and I I I answered the call and made scheduled it like for like three months away, so. Um thanks, guys. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Okay, now everyone knows that I have a brand-new regulator. Um next up, looks like that's sort of. Um back to the kind of business as usual here, that um. Community housing zoning. Um also known as MBA Communities and formerly known as MBTA Zoning. Um we're going to kind of talk about the process here and um most likely um. Um just take a vote to start the public hearing process at the next meeting. Um so Stephanie, would you like to get us started with that?
Yes, um so what I wanted to talk about tonight, the two important things were uh to talk about the upcoming first public input session. And how we envision that. Um being structured, getting feedback on the board from that, and then I'd like to talk a little bit more and get some feedback on the board for. How they'd like to see subsequent public input sessions be held. And um then. We need the board to vote to hold the public hearing on the second of October, so we can get that open in time. Um it it's not a hearing where it's expected that. Any decisions are going to be made, especially because the public. Input sessions are just starting, and there'll be, we anticipate other conversation. Um so again, it's just so that we can keep the. Project moving forward.
Yeah, they were to have something um ready for that the state can review um for an eventual possible um bringing it to a town meeting um in two thousand twenty-four. Is that?
Yes, that we need to send that to the state on eleven six, a draft. Of the zoning.
So we'd send the draft, we'd take a vote, um taking, well, taking all the input, um talk about it at a few public hearings. Um eventually, hopefully, come to some sort of decision, take a vote. Uh to move it towards the state, and then the state would have uh several months to review it, and the town meeting is in um. In February, is that right?
No, the town meeting is May twenty-second.
Oh, May.
I'm sorry, May twentieth.
That's what I thought, right? Yeah, so.
The town meeting is May twentieth.
Yep, the actual town meeting is not until the spring, but.
Right.
Need to have this into the state, so they are planning a time to review it.
And and to the um. Into the select board for inclusion on the warrant, and then also review by the various boards that normally review.
But in the spring, yeah.
Correct. Yep. Yep.
Um, does anyone have any questions about the schedule? Um now, what about the um as far as the? The uh input sessions, um. Do you think an impression would be better for maybe like maybe one in person or one online, depending on how people prefer to uh attend?
So we're suggesting that the first public input session, the structure would be um. The consultant we're working with, Judy Barrett, would do an overview of the MBTA zoning and the requirement and what it means. What it doesn't mean, because we're, you know, the assumption is that most of the public isn't. As familiar, certainly as the board is, and with some of the fine details, and kind of um. You know, make sure that people understand what what the zoning isn't going to do or require of the town. Then. The um sec- that would lead to an overview of what the town has done today, what steps the town has. Taken both in the decision-making process to move forward with proposing zoning at town meeting. And then the steps that the planning board has taken to date and go through the timeline. For the lead-up to town meeting.
Cool, sounds good. So is Judy's part of it going to be, were you thinking online or in person for that one?
Well, that would be, that would be one session.
Mm-hmm, right.
And so the thinking. Was that we do the whole, that whole session online, and it does make it more available to a lot of people. Um I know that the board mentioned wanting to do some meetings. With um the public. In person, and I think that that makes a lot of sense. Um it certainly provides an opportunity. I was talking with Peter earlier. You could have poster boards up of the different districts. People can engage with members of the board. They can write comments. We can have um, you know, either slips of paper or sheets where people can write their comments down as well as share them. With um with uh with the board and with and with staff, so. Just wanted your thoughts on that and um how you'd like to proceed.
Well, what do the others think? What do you think about the uh schedule and um Stephanie's proposed um? Plan there for the outreach?
I think it makes sense. I s- I support it. Um and by the way, maybe I, we already talked about this. Is this, is this Judy Barrett? Did we work with her before? On some zone?
On the Furness Village District zoning.
Okay, I thought I recognized that.
Yep, and we did that earlier on the uh on the Cuisin commercial as well.
That's, that's true.
At the intersection of Cuisin commercial. Now we're going dating ourselves, yeah, right? Okay, so.
All right, so then the um the only question on that is. Who would like to um do the town's update on that October eleventh meeting?
Well, that's one with Judy and the.
Yeah.
My mind.
Yep.
I mean, I don't mind talking, but if you if you want to, you know, um sometimes I can go off on a tangent on this, so um you might want to, but it promised to be good. But but the way I look at it isn't the way everyone looks at it, so I just keep that in mind right there. I'll be happy to explain how I and the board and the department have handled this, but you know. Yeah, I'll definitely be there, and I I'm happy to do a quick interruption, and then maybe can pass it on to. You know, the planning department or Judy or whatever.
Sounds good to me.
And let's see, that that's for the which date, Stephanie?
October eleventh. So this week I will be starting um, actually, starting tomorrow, really publicizing it. And put a little agenda together. I'll get that out to the board members, and then Peter, maybe on um. Maybe this week on Wednesday, we can talk a little bit more about. Uh kind of the overview of what the town's been doing and timeline and information that I can provide you, make sure you have.
Yeah, okay.
That at hand.
Um I have to double-check my calendars, so I'll just um, you can send it, I'll remember.
Want to get back, just get back to me?
Yeah, sure.
That sounds good.
Question, Stephanie, how this is publicized? Where where that goes?
You mean, how do we um let people know? So we'll use um all the social media the town uses, the town crier, the homepage of the town, the news. Section of the town's homepage. Web of the website, we'll post it on the planning board page. We will put it on Facebook. Um. Trying to think, some of the other. We will post an agenda. I think eh because this is an information center uh session where the board's receiving information. It's not really a hearing. You're not going to have. Um a debate or deliberations, but I still think it makes sense to post it as a public meeting, so it'll be on the agenda. Um and that will keep everything copacetic on that side. Um. I'm open to suggestions. I know I'll think of other things that I haven't written down. Um. And also I would ask the board, so we'll send, I'll I'll send out communications to the various boards, letting them know the chairs of the boards um. And, you know, I ask that you share with your friends. We do that when we ask, uh let boards know that a public session is happening. And ask that people share with their friends.
Yep, joined it. What was your comment, John?
Will you um place flyers in like the library and at town hall and things like that as well, too, Stephanie?
We certainly can, yeah.
I think there might be a few key organizations that. They get notified, notify their members.
Mm-hmm.
So.
If you're members, if you're members of those associations, by all means, um.
Yeah, I'm 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 planning to stand on the Lions Club meeting next minute.
Yeah, Lee Williams used to be a great source. He had a newsletter that he would send out every week, and that was the way we would.
Yeah, he has the Eastern Distribution list.
Yes, yes, he did.
But we the Lions, we Lions, we still have it. Uh I don't know if would use it. Um.
Watch out.
I know that they're.
Might not have been updated in a while, right? You know, we have some new people in town here, so. Um, great, um, okay, well, I mean, that's pretty straightforward to me, um. So if you have any other ideas, then send them off to Stephanie, and um otherwise we can.
And I think we're thinking um. The meeting would start at seven o'clock. That gives people time to get home, have dinner, kind of take care of the kids.
Yep. Yeah, that's true. Yep, most, some sporting events are done at that point, so. Yeah, um.
Do you have dates in mind for the other public input sessions, Stephanie? It might be helpful to just advertise everything in a grouping.
Um, I don't. Like we have, I I don't have target dates yet for those. And that's something else I'd like to talk with the board with. Um maybe think about. The schedule going forward and what would be a good casing?
I feel like every, every week is too often.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe every two weeks. I mean, is everyone kind of up for this? I mean, you want to uh join, or are we guys, should be those, I guess, if if you're not. Interested in being attending all these, just let us know that we will, you know, you know, have a conversation about it, obviously, right? You know, but.
Yeah, and let me just add, so what the contract called for were four public sessions um that. Judy would help us with.
Mm-hmm.
Um and then any. Meeting where the board is discussing this under the hearing is also. An opportunity for input fro- from the public.
Yeah, so that's a. Little bit of a time commitment there, but it's over like the course of about two months.
Yeah, so you, why don't I do this? Why don't I put together a suggested timeline for the remaining three? Formal public output sessions that aren't part of the hearing. And who can get back to me on what they think about that?
I think I ask this just about every time we have this discussion, but what what is the date that we as a board need to vote on? Kind of the final verbiage in order to get it in front of uh, you know, the town meeting by May?
So. The. The real firm language is eleven. Six is the date we want to send. Uh we want the board to vote to send a draft.
To stay. Mm-hmm.
Housing and um. Housing and livable communities, and then the very final date, because a- again, they might come back with comments. And there might be um something that the board thinks of and and comes, wants to discuss. But the, let's see, what do we have? Submit articles for warrant inclusion is the target date is the twelfth of February. And that's normally when we send at least a placeholder. For. The warrant articles.
I mean, but you, I mean, I figure, I'm kind of guessing the way this process will work with this date. I I don't know. But is, you know, they'll take what we have, and then they'll probably, if they make a few recommendations, well, great. But then if we're making like minor tweaks to it, they would, they they're going to be available to to look at what we've done, right?
I I would expect so.
Well, if they can, then you, you know, I mean, they can't really make us do anything if they can, don't have time to look at it, right? So whatever.
The reason I'm asking is just because, you know, but uh I mean, I know there's going to be a lot of public input on. Eh eh you know, what we're permitting in, or what we're recommending in certain areas.
Yes.
And you know, that that could be be impacted by the public info sessions. And I guess my question, or I'm just throwing it out there for discussion, is. Do we have to try to jam all these? These four sessions in by November in order to get a date? Or should we allow it to breathe a little bit? We'll get a preliminary. Kind of thumbs up from the state, and then we have until February to fine-tune it. I mean, I guess that's where I'm I'm a little uncertain, but.
My my sort of.
Right, yeah.
I. I'm with you on that, Bob. Um, I think if we asked Wayne, he he'd want to, he's very cautious because he wants to make sure that whatever the. If the town votes on at town meeting, that we know that that's going to be approved by um. Housing and livable communities. However, again, we ex- we are expecting to hear, and I need to check in with Judy, because I haven't seen anything yet. But we're expecting to hear soon on um. HLC's. Review of Lexington, and I think Clinton was one of the other communities. And we'll know if they, what their feedback is. We'll know if there are comments. We'll know.
That's going to be all, that'll be public. Basically.
Yes, yes, yeah. I I asked Judy that. I said, well, because it would be foolish for them not to, because you have communities that are going to town meeting. And it would facilitate their review to know that people aren't going to include the same things, that they're not making comments.
Yeah, it definitely can't be like, oh, well, Wayne said, the state said, right? Yeah, it's like, we need like a letter coming from them saying, okay, this, that, and the other thing, right? And that's, and we'll decide how to address that with the staff input.
But I guess my my question is, i- i- and and I totally understand the point of, we got to have something to them by November. I totally. That. I guess my question is, assuming that they give us, you know, the thumbs up on the structure. Of the bylaw, are we going to have more time from November to February to tweak the? You know, the actual districts, or how much goes here versus how much goes there? Or do we actually have to have all of that? Finalized by November in order for them to give us the the.
I thi- I think you will have time to do some tweaking.
Okay.
Yeah, wow.
Case, and I, you know, I kind of go with what Peter had suggested, you know, let's let it breathe. I, you know, we don't want to try to jam all four of these sessions into. The month of October.
Right, and 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 maybe you don't want to do four sessions, maybe, maybe two or three of the formal. I'm I'm going to call them more of a formal public outreach.
We already also have our regular public hearings, too, right? Yeah, so it's.
Right, right, so it may be plenty to do two or maybe three outside of the public hearing process.
I eh I think it's important to do it beyond the practical side. Not jamming and and rushing is also. To demonstrate to the public that we are really engaging them. Because uh you. And and this is very important, because there are many people that oppose this, and they want eh the town not to accept it. Uh and eh. By doing the sessions, by opening this. By doing the sessions, by opening this to discussion. You are. Maybe ensuring that at least. You can demonstrate that you did due diligence consulting. Uh, and that has a lot of weight. To be, for whatever the results of the of the vote will be on on town hall. Having that on your pocket, that you did do diligence with the with the input of from the public is very important.
Mm hmm, yeah, so we guys like maybe just like, so. So maybe just two before the November deadline and then we'll have kind of two. Um, ready to, then we'll, you know, then we'll get to the state, give it a little time to kind of to do what it does with the state, right? Then we just kind of start things back up in like the. Early two thousand twenty four, unless we feel a need for something like in December, but.
I I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
I would just caution with the holidays in November and December, but I think what you're saying is. You know, do what we can before the end of October and then skip into twenty twenty four.
Yeah.
Because I don't think you're going to get too many people.
Even by like November, tell people if their mind is somewhere else, right? Yeah, all the way.
In order to have the ninety day, I think it's ninety days for the review. It, we have. We have to get it to them on the sixth or thereabouts, the vote. So we won't be bumping into the holidays. That does, and that does kind of give a breather on the hop over the course of the holidays.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that idea.
All right, well, um, that sounds good. So, well, if we want to um. Open a public hearing next um. In two weeks at the next meeting. Um, the, what we need to do here is to um. To vote to hold a public hearing on the community housing zoning um on ten two.
I'll make a motion to hold the public hearing, Stetson.
Second. Second.
Mickey got that one. You guys are really tying each other to, okay, I, all in favor, Kadam?
Aye.
Zigman.
Aye.
Stetson.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Deshane, I, I'm just going in order of the blocks. They keep switching around, so that's good. It means we're we're all talking, I think, so, yeah, all right. Um, we have Stephanie, the flood, the flood plain is back, the flood plain overlay district. Oh, sorry, did I, I might, I should have asked if anyone from the uh public had any questions.
I don't see any hands raised, Peter.
Okay, sorry about that, guys. Um, okay, back to.
Yes, so we talked, um, we talked about the, we, the commu- um. Floodplain overlay district amendments that are being required from FEMA. Back in May, um, it was kind of late in the game and the board had some questions and wanted better explanations. For why the changes were necessary and um. I kind of talked about punting it to the fall town meeting. So um I would like to hold those hearings. I am preparing a document that. Addresses, it identifies each of the changes in the zoning and then explains those. And Eric Carlson, who is the FEMA representative in Massachusetts for um. Floodplain management. Has offered to make himself available at a meeting to answer.
That would be good, because this just um, you know, between like. Just really like three of us were kind of like, what is this last time, right? And um, other people might be the same, feel the same way, so I think it'll be great.
Well, that that was an error on my part because I lived and raved floodplain. Um. For the last fifteen years.
Yeah.
And, you know, just kind of assumed everybody knew it. Like I did in the the purposes for.
Sounds like we, everyone survived a year without their FEMA insurance, but I, we don't know if we want to go.
Well, no, they did not, I mean, they, they have not canceled it and they're not canceling it in the near future. It is just something that we've been told. If if the town is not compliant, they may not.
A lot of us really didn't understand. That's why we need Mr. Carlson to come in here.
Yes, yep.
All right, anyone questions about that? Are any uh motions?
Make a motion to hold the flood play, plane overlay district amendment public hearing on October sixteenth. Stetson.
Kevin, second.
Okay, um, all in favor, um, Wolf?
Aye.
Stetson.
Aye.
Kadam.
Aye.
Um, Zigman.
Aye.
Okay, um, that passes. And um now. Next, last um public hearing to talk about here.
I am um. Rescinding that.
Oh.
It turns out th- this is related to the um disposal of public property thirty six. I mean, three sixty Washington Street, Marrow Hall. The town has gone out seeking proposals. Um, they did have received a response. And it won't be necessary based on the proposed use. Which is from Stonehill to actually change the zoning.
Oh, we won't. Wait, so we don't have to have a public hearing?
No.
Whatever Stonehill wants to do with it. Um, can you give us more, can you please uh kind of update the whole board on what it was going to be for and what, why it might not be required now?
The per- the purpose, educational purposes is um allowed by a private institution under the. Municipal and open space.
Or is dealing emotionally and now it is going to stay that way? Um, okay.
Are they planning to reuse the building? Is that, is that excellent?
On there, so so no news is big, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, so one less, one less zoning article for this.
For you, glad to have that off my chest, all right, um. Uh, meeting minutes? Anyone check those out?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, Stetson.
Um, I just have a quick comment there is um, we just have to, um Suzanne and Stephanie and all of us. We have to keep remembering to list all those items that were included in the um presentation, right?
Yes.
Well, even if like some like a random person, just like shit, I'll say, I'll share my screen, here's Google Maps. I guess we just write, they reference Google Maps and look at. Wall Street or something, right? I mean, I don't know, just we'll try it, but we should do, I think we should do better than.
Yeah, or, I mean, another option is that if someone want, is planning on sharing their screen or would like to share their screen, they should notify. The chair. Of the town ahead of the meeting.
Yeah.
And so we know what it is they're going to share and we can capture that information ahead of time.
Yeah, like if someone had pictures of like the the. And what like how something was affecting it or something.
Right, yeah.
Okay, um.
Yeah, I mean, generally, we we do a pretty good job of that, but yeah, there, I definitely um.
It's kind of those one off funny things where like, yeah, right, but but as long as, I mean, if there, if you have like, if there were like twenty one things and you have twenty, well, that's, that's good. You're showing that you're doing it and just make you, might have missed it like a one thing, right? So, yeah. Okay, um, well. To, okay, so that motion is uh has been made. That needs a second and then about. Prove the minutes that is.
A second.
Okay, um, all in favor, um. Zigman?
Aye.
Kadam?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Stetson?
Aye.
Deshane, aye. Um. Anything else here? Um, chair report, um. Um, you know, I don't think I have anything, um, nothing to report here. Stephanie, you have any updates for us?
No. No, we just got a lot going on.
Do any, we only have three attendees left, left. It's the last chance to say something, otherwise um. You can reserve your time for two weeks from now, if you'd like. Um, okay, that's that. Um. Guess we can adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Stetson.
Zigman, second.
Okay, all in favor, Stetson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Um, Kadam?
Aye.
And Zigman?
Aye.
Okay, just um, I just thank everyone um for joining the planning board and helping us um fill our seats. So it's um, I'd like to work in with uh Mickey and I'm looking forward to working with Joanne, so. Um, see you guys soon. Goodbye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good luck.